So I've been asked if I could kick things off. I understand that Mary Jo Larson wanted to speak on DDA. And so. Need to do roll call for work session. Okay, yes, if you would. Do we have them?
No, it's okay. Council staff, thank you for letting me speak. I'm here on behalf of DDA at the beginning of budget because I can see our DDA with our new board moving back into the city. And trying to work together more and be more a part of city and city staff. And I would like to ask, we need an executive director now. We didn't need it for a while. Now we've got two developments coming to us that I think we needed an executive director for. So we need to start advertising. As you well know, before when we we shared an executive director with the city. The city paid two thirds of his wage and we paid a third as well as for his secretary, two thirds from the city and a third to the DDA. We're still under the the financial constraints. And I come to you before budget, hoping that maybe you could talk about an executive director that could work maybe for both of us. And we could resume that type of relationship to handle our new developments that are being proposed to us. Um, I would also like to talk to you about a workshop. I really think it's important for our new board and city council and city staff to have a workshop together. So we can work closer on the same page. And that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm Mary Jo.
I.
I don't have any familiarity with what this split role looked like before. Working for the city and working for the DDA. So can you kind of articulate to some of us newbies what that might look like?
The office space was at the trail headquarters, the log cabinet there. All of our books were kept there. Our executive director worked for us trying to promote development within the DDA district. And he along with our attorney, Paul Benidetti, worked on contracts. When there was a development, our first one was the dinosaur resource center and we did several after that. And the two of them worked closely together. It came to the point where we ended up with a lawsuit and because of that, we knew there wouldn't be any more development. So we couldn't see spending the expense. City or DDA to continue that relationship since we couldn't do anything anywhere. Well, now we passed all that and now. Now we're back to development. So now we need an executive director who we're hoping to share with city.
Council member Zulwaga, it was a shared, it was an economic economic development director and DDA. So development director. Downtown development.
Oh, thank you.
Two folds the position.
So my where my head's going with that, Michael. Is there any? With regards to tourism and development in that regard, is is there something happening there? Or is that maybe where to look at that join?
So I would say as part of the tourism effort, we're still early on in that and we haven't. Contemplated what that might look like in terms of tangible actions yet conceivably, that could be something that could come out of it. I would think just from my past experience and looking at other cities, the economic development director and DDA director would be a different person than a tourism person. Because they're they're very different disciplines. But in the comprehensive plan draft, the economic development team did think quite a bit about that economic development position. So there might be more direction from that. I have not dealt into that real deeply. And there's nothing in the 22 budget being that we wanted to see how the comp plan developed well before we went down that road. Not to say we couldn't look at it here very promptly if the council wished to do so.
Okay, that would be good.
And I I'm forced to at least educate or share information with the rest of the council. Mary Jo has. Presented a request for us to consider an executive director. The DDA board did not support that position. The DDA board specifically said not at this time. So this is a unique request. But you need to know that the current DDA board members did not support hiring at this point in time. We are going to analyze the projects that are coming forward and then we will reassess whether it's time for an executive director or not. But at this point, the vote was no.
And that's why I'm here talking to you because we can't afford it to pay the whole amount of an executive director and hire one separately. That's why I'm here talking to you to see your reaction on that. So I can take that back to the board if we were to share a position, would that be? Acceptable to the new board? Is it good, Rusty?
Yeah, that clarification is is fine. I just want to make sure they.
And I didn't want to speak for the board until I talked to the council, whether that's even a possibility, then we'll take it to the board.
And that wording is is fine. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, if not, then I will leave it to you. And if you can set up the time for a workshop, we would love it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Jo. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mary Jo. So I Rob tells me that council member Alfery did join us. She was only able to make it as an attendee. We're trying to get her in as a panelist, but she'll be joining us shortly. So I wanted to give a little context for the rest of the evening. We do have a hard stop at 6:00 PM. So that, you know, I can work in our favor, right? Can't talk all night. I'll try not to. Because the Board of Appeals, as I understand, is coming in after us. So please keep that in mind. We have two two different but related concepts that we're going to be going through tonight. I appreciate everyone being here on a rainy Monday evening. We're going to talk budget, which I love. Other people, thanks for bearing with me. The first, the first presentation, our finance director, Anne Vassalotti, is going to walk us through. This is about the American Rescue Plan. This is money set out by the federal government for cities, counties, and a bunch of other folks earlier this year. It's intended to be a kind of economic stimulus poke at the time post COVID kind of. But really more oriented on how how can the nation recover from the economic fallout of COVID as opposed to responding to COVID mitigating COVID itself? And so there's, there's a number of dollars there for the city to program and we'll talk about that. And that's going to help provide some helpful context for the 2022 budget. There are some things that the American Rescue Plan or ARP, as I'll call it, can fund that we may not have to cover out of our 2022 budget, which is a nice thing. So they do, they are part and parcel of one another. This is how we're doing it. So we want to give you an idea of the eligibility for ARP money. It's unique. We've never seen anything quite like this. In terms of federal stimulus and the flexibility of those dollars. A lot of cities and counties are still struggling with what to do with this money. It's it just my own personal feeling is the more direction the federal government gives on how to spend the money, the more confusing it is. And no, no offense to my friends at Treasury, but it's just, it's not entirely clear. But Aaron has been looking through this day and night, poor guy, on what's eligible and what's not. And so you'll you'll see a lot of questions out there in the world about what can this money be used for? We have a pretty solid program, I think, so far. Something you won't see in here as opposed to the CBRF funding last year is any money for business relief programs. And just in some of my very lightweight anecdotal research, there's not a lot of clamoring for this. I'm not seeing a lot of our peer jurisdictions add money for business relief anymore. We did a couple rounds of it last year, gave out, I think, $430,000, something to that effect. I asked the Chamber of Commerce and several of its members, like, is there, is there a need for additional dollars from the government for individual businesses out there for hiring people? I just, I got crickets even from the chamber itself, which I found a little surprising. There's not a lot of appetite for that out there. It's not to say we couldn't set aside some money for that. If you all felt that was something that was important, but you won't see that here. And the the other kind of big themes Aaron will get into in more detail. A lot of this money is intended to recognize folks, employees that were on the front line of serving the city during COVID. Wanting to take care of those folks. It's also going to help us take care of some unforeseen capital needs and some other needs is what we're going to recommend. And then we'll recommend holding on to some of it, being that we can spend it up to the end of 2024. So with that, I will turn it over to Aaron and who's ever running the PowerPoint.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
All right. So yeah, Michael already introduced the topic. It's going to be the American Rescue Plan. We're going to go over what it is, what it means to us, what the eligible uses are that we have available to us. What the city recommends initially, some considerations for different things we can use the funds for. And then a cost breakdown of what that would cost and how much of the funds it would it would take up. So what is the American Rescue Plan? It allocates $350 billion in federal funds to state, local, territorial, and tribal governments. Technically, it's part of the broader coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, but it's a smaller part of the $1.9 trillion. As a smaller city government of less than 50,000, we'll receive our funds directly through the state government. And these funds are intended to support immediate pandemic response and bring back jobs and land the groundwork for a strong and equitable recovery. So our city will receive $1.9 million. We received half of that money last year. I'm sorry, this year, 990,000 and we'll receive our second tranche of that money in June of next year, not another 990,000. And as Michael said, the funds don't have to be spent all at once. We have until December 31st of 2024 to spend these funds. And actually, if we do capital projects, as long as we have the plan in place, we can actually spend these funds all the way through 2026. So that's something definitely to consider when we're looking at these funds. There's four broad eligibility buckets as to what we can spend the money on. So we have public health emergency and economic impacts. That bucket has a number of different items that it makes up. We have compensation for essential workers, which is exactly what it sounds like. Revenue recovery as well, and then water sewer and broadband infrastructure, which is another big bucket of things that we'll dive into. So we're going to look at what makes up these different buckets now. So the public health emergency and economic impacts, we have mental health assistance. We have parks maintenance and upkeep. As everybody knows, during last year and this year, the parks have been, as our park director likes to say, loved to death. And so they did put a lot of ability in there for us to use it for parks maintenance and just beautifying the parks. We have ventilation improvements in congregation settings. So HVAC systems with better purification systems, air purifiers, those kind of things. Enhancement of public health data systems. We have capital investments in public facilities to. Better prepares for handling pandemic and adopting our buildings to to those mitigation tactics. Then in the same bucket, we have back to work incentives. So we can do things like childcare assistance, transportation, hiring bonuses to get people back into the workforce if we're having a big shortage. And then also in here is vaccine incentives. So bonuses for people to get the vaccine, different programs that you can run to incentivize your employees to get get the vaccine. In our second bucket, we have compensation for essential workers. So this is that hazard pay that you can give your employees, all your frontline workers. Who were having to meet the pandemic head on, we're able to give them hazard pay. In our third bucket, we have revenue recovery. So each year you're able to look at the amount of revenue that you projected based on your budget versus the amount of revenue that you actually received in your general fund. And if you had a shortfall, you actually are able to put in for revenue recovery with these funds. Based on our 2020 and our projections for 2021, we don't currently believe the city is going to be able to use this bucket. But it is there if something does happen in 22 or 23. For us to consider to use it. But at this time, we don't think it would be for 2020 or 2021. Okay, the fourth bucket, we'll start out with municipal broadband. So the funds allow, if a city does not have. Good internet available to all of its residents throughout the city, that these funds are able to be used to bring broadband to the different parts of the city using these funds. And they do have a little, a few requirements that it needs to be at least 100 megabytes per second. And if that's not feasible because of, you know, the. For whatever reason, then you'd have to be at at least 20 to 100, but you'd have to explain why why that's not the case. So so this would be where if you need to bring fiber into the city, different things like that, you are able to use the funds for that reason. Water. So we are able to use this for for drinking water, unnecessary investments in projects that improve access to drinking water. We're able to use it for infrastructure for water. We're able to do it for building, building upgrades, replacing service lines, anything like that. We're able to use the ARP funds. You also can consolidate systems and it's also if you have a cybersecurity vulnerability, you can use it for that as well. And then in addition to regular water, we can also use it for wastewater, stormwater, wastewater, infrastructure systems. We're also use it able to use it to reduce pollen pollution in our water, improve resilience of the infrastructure for severe weather events and create a greener infrastructure. So now that we've gone through all the eligibility of what we can use those funds for, the city has put together.
Aaron, would you, would you mind holding off for a second? We have a question.
Oh, sure.
Can you go back to, I think, one or two slides? I'll tell you when to stop, stop a bit forward. Okay, I just want to make sure I understand. Storage systems, would that include a reservoir?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
That was it? Okay. Michael, would you like to go through these or do you want me to continue?
Sure. Yeah, I can go through these, Aaron. Thank you. And so at this point in time, we will have a handful of recommendations for specific items. That we would like council's consensus to move forward on. And if you all are okay with it, we would come back with a supplemental because we would have to appropriate this money to spend it. But just to give you a little context on it, the some of the things we've been thinking about. Hazard pay for frontline workers is mentioned. You know, we're as part of the 22 budget you'll see here in a little bit, we're we're thinking a lot about, you know, the city's most valuable asset or service organization. People provide that service. A lot of folks were not afforded the option to work from home as some of us did. They had to be there helping people, arresting people. Cleaning the parks, attending to the wastewater plant. And so they didn't have the luxury of working from home or distancing from other folks. So I wanted to recognize what what we call frontline workers. We like to think we're all essential. That's why we call them frontline workers. Vaccine incentives, I've shared with the council. This development from the presidential administration. Possible mandates for vaccines. We're not sure if that's going to hit municipal employees or not. We'd like to do a pretty, what I think is pretty reasonable vaccine incentive program for employees. The Knox Box Partnership, this was a request from Northeast Teller Fire. And I don't know if folks are familiar with what a Knox Box is, but for for the real estate agents among us, they will be very familiar with. All of us probably with the little padlock thing that goes on the front door of the house you can show, right? Well, Knox Boxes that for fire, basically, they will have a universal key that prevents them from having to barge into a door, break a window. Stuff like that. And so they can get in very quickly and easily. And there's like a small set of keys that go to all of the people with Knox Boxes. Chief Lambert had come to me several months ago and asked if the city would be willing to help him fund replacement of existing Knox Boxes in the Woodland Park community. With new to replace the ones that are currently out there with a a digital Knox Box and I can pass that around. What it is is just, it's helping those with who already have invested in a Knox Box, like a business owner or a resident. They've already spent almost $300 on that Knox Box. So this would basically provide a community program to upgrade all of those Knox Boxes to digital. The fire department would then have one fob to unlock all of them as opposed to a handful of keys on key ring. Woodland Park could also stand to benefit by purchasing its own digital key fobs and our police officers could get into those Knox boxed. Properties as well. I think there's between 100 and 200 different businesses and residences that have those Knox Boxes. And so I'll, I'll show you, I'll show you the figures for all these things here in the next slide. You know what? Can we just go to the next slide? I don't know why we have to. There we go. So that to replace all those, they're a few hundred dollars each. The total ask for that would be at $42,500. The next thing we have on here, fiber, you saw that the the feds have a really big interest in this 100 megabit per second symmetrical fiber. We have engaged with a few different firms on how we might. Assist in boosting internet speeds across the city. I've talked to several of you about this. There was some work done last year and the year before by the city to bring dark fiber up the pass from downtown Colorado Springs. Right now it terminates at Walmart. That's city on fiber, 24 strands. And what this would do, this would help, this this would develop an initial engineering plan to figure out. How to get the fiber to a different city facilities so we could have our own inter facility network. We've had some service issues off and on over the years with our current provider. And so we could have our own network and have control over that and have wicked fast speeds. They're reliable, but also as part of that to leverage future grant funds to lay that network. And where there are gaps in service areas throughout the community, we would help fill those gaps. So some of you may live in parts of town where you don't have access to fiber, you're you're pretty, you're like below 100 megabit per second speed. Maybe you're even below that, that really minimal 25 megabit per second speed or three megabit upload speed. And so we would look at providing faster service to those pockets and what's called ubiquity. And so we would have a hand, we would use grant funds to lay what's called middle mile fiber. And then we could work with the current internet service providers to provide service to individual homes. What this is not is a city becoming a service provider. No way, no how, don't want it. What we would do is we would lay the fiber, we probably on the fiber, and then we would lease it out in a public private partnership. And then we would probably stand to to yield revenue from that, or we would trade up for our own inter facility network. All that is to say that this, this is the first phase of a larger fiber project. There is all kinds of federal government money out there for fiber, there's state money for it. Even private internet service providers right now can leverage state funding. But this would help us figure out where we want to lay the fiber, where it needs to be and what the next steps are. Yeah. Are you going to work this in conjunction with Teller County? This this plan, the layout, the remember? Yeah, we we have, we haven't had serious conversations about this so far. There is one provider who has fiber that's coming from the west that terminates in Dubai, as I understand. And they would like to make their way east and connect to the springs. I don't know if they would need assistance from Teller County. We would have to have that conversation, but one of the companies we talked to in their scope of work for this $40,000 was to engage the different stakeholders. Who might benefit from this? Karis Bible College, for example, Womack Ministries has seems to have some interest. And having this high quality service out there. And so there, there will be a number of stakeholders engaged by whatever company we would contract with. So initial, my initial conversations with Teller is that this was not on the radar. That may have changed. It's been a while since we talked. Parks and maintenance going to the 22 bracket here. I don't, I don't know if we have too many specific projects in that. I would imagine Kip and Cindy have more details on that. HVAC and filtration, $100,000, that is for the U Pass Cultural Center. We don't have air conditioning or air filtration in that facility. And on a very frequent basis, we have hundreds of people in there. And as I understand, it gets a little warm in the summer when you have that many people in there. And so we look at a ventilation system, which makes it eligible for these funds because it helps mitigate COVID transmission of COVID. And we could probably stand to have some air in there too. And then finally. There is. I'm never going to remember what this thing is called. The Dove Program. What is the Dove Program? It's not a bird. What is it?
It is not a bird. Disinfection outreach verification evaluation. It's just a CD PHE or state mandate coming down. To disinfect the water to higher levels than what we currently do.
And is it currently budgeted?
Not for this amount.
So they $100,000 is all for this project that wasn't foreseen at this scale.
Yes, so when the plant was originally built, it met all the requirements. Those requirements have since been changed and we need to verify those. So back in 2016 and 2017, we did an engineering study on the things we can do to meet the requirements. And we met with CD PG last week or the week before. And I'm anticipating a letter any day that will give us a one year deadline to meet these requirements.
Is this looking at transitioning a chlorine purification to a chlorine dioxide? Purification system, which I understand is far better.
No, this is simply just showing the state that we can meet there. It's a law removal of basically chlorine contact. So we have in our system now, we have a 225,000 gallon tank and then a 2.45 million gallon tank that the water. Travels through before it reaches our citizens, which we believe it meets the disinfection contact time, but we have to prove it. And then in the middle of that, we have two, we have about 11 customers that fall in between those two tanks that we have to get that same water back up to. So this would be a basically a booster station and I'll say a verification station of the water quality.
All right, so. What we have before you is as far as we've gone really in terms of programming this money, can we go to the next slide? What and we'll probably come back to visit this. This is kind of small. My apologies. But what what the slide shows is that when you consider all the things we showed you for 2021. Including that ask from Northeast Teller County Fire. That accounts for $161,500 of the total $990,000 we've received for the first half of the ARP funding. That money is sitting in our bank account right now. So what I would propose to you today is if there's any of these things that you are okay funding. I would ask for your consensus to do that. We'd bring it back for supplemental. If you want to scratch any of these items, of course, we can do that too. But that would leave eight about $830,000 that we would just sit on for the time being. For 2022, we get another $990,000 in June, as Aaron said. That leaves us with $1.82 million as of June of next year. And at that point, we would, for 2022, we would program in these other larger projects. Parks O and M, 100,000 for UPCC HVAC. That's a lot of acronyms, sorry. And then the Dove, one more acronym for it, $800,000. And so that would put us at almost $1.1 million of program funds, leaving us with $753,000 yet to be programmed. The the reason we didn't program all of it, as as you all are aware, governments have no problem spending money. There are a number of other capital. There are a number of other capital programs, particularly in the water area, that we could fund with this money. And maybe we do at some point. But, uh, we thought it might be helpful being that we have some time to spend this money. Uh, we have through twenty twenty-four, it might be helpful to sit on this and see if there are other capital needs that might arise. Unfortunately, we don't seem to be done with COVID. Uh, there may be other expenses, uh, that are eligible for this money related to COVID, uh, including business relief, uh, that we might want to, uh, let a little more time go by before we program all of it. And so with that, uh, this, this is our, uh, our recommendation. I, I would say on the Knox boxes, uh, I don't know if I put it as a, as a recommendation of mine, to be quite honest. This was something that, uh, I, I shared with the fire chief. I would put up here for your consideration. Uh, I called out because it is an inter jurisdictional assistance, if you will. Certainly it's a way for us to be a good partner. Um, there is some value to our police department. But, uh, it's, it's not something that's directly a benefit to a large percentage of our population. So, um, with that, my question would be, uh, we would like your permission to appropriate through the supplemental in a couple of weeks. The items for twenty twenty-one, uh, can we go back to the previous slide? So it's not tiny. Thank you.
I just would like to suggest that with reference to it's similar application to real estate. With our sentry lock boxes that we use now that are electronic. And they actually give us feedback as to who actually has opened that box. It's all done through an app on, on your phone. Or you can use a card if you prefer not to use the app. And it applies to the same unit. So you don't have to have different units. It just doesn't seem sensible to me to have keys or fobs. Because you can lose them. Um, it just seems cumbersome in today's world where everything can be controlled with an app. So that would just be my hesitant, and I don't know, I think we should, just my personal perspective, address our needs before we reach out. Not to say that I'm not a partner and don't see the value in partnership. That's all. Thank you.
Same time. How many people would get a Knox box and how many citizens would not?
Yeah, as I mentioned, I, I don't have a specific number, but between a hundred and two hundred people within Woodland Park, uh, have a Knox box right now. That, that includes businesses, as I understand, most of the folks out there with the Knox box are businesses rather than, uh, individual residents.
And how many residents do we have, Sally? Ballpark.
Okay.
I've seen these in, um, in elder, elder care. I've seen these type of boxes used for the fire department to get access into, uh, facilities where there's somebody in the house who's got a health issue. I don't know who funded that though. I don't know who funds that sort of program, but, um, maybe uh, the chief knows about that in other jurisdictions. No.
My parents have one in Florida. They're elderly. They funded it themselves.
They funded it themselves. Okay. Yeah.
It's a particular one you get at Home Depot.
Yeah.
You buy it, you put your key in it, you call the police department and they put the code number in so they have it when they come to your home. But the people in that community are doing it themselves.
And, and I've seen in other cities where there's a grant program with an application where income qualified folks can get city funding to pay for the Knox box too.
So this is council member Alfieri. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Almost.
Is that a little bit better?
Can we boost her?
Rob?
He's working on it.
Sorry.
Thank, thank you for your patience. We, I think we can hear you now.
Any better?
Yes.
Great. Um, so my two thoughts are I am opposed to hazard pay and vaccine incentives. Ultimately, I, I don't support those. I leave it up to our city employees to decide whether or not they want to choose that for themselves. I ultimately think all of this money should go under Kip to decide what he wants to do with it. If we can use it for water resources to put towards the reservoir, so be it. That is our greatest concern is water reservation and water availability in the next few years. And I would really like to see us really move all of this money to him to decide how we're going to do this to provide for the most basic resources of our citizens in the coming years, period. I personally don't want to see it go to anything else. And let Kip decide where it needs to go to provide for water and wastewater.
I, I'd like to weigh in on two of them, uh, well, one particularly. Um, and that is I am not in favor of spending one penny on vaccine incentives. I would be willing to spend some money on vaccine education. The fact that the average vaccine kills a hundred and twenty-five people a year. And this vaccine has already killed twelve of fourteen thousand. I think we should let our city employees know that before they get incentivized to get the jab.
Well, let's, let's get our, our data correct. The source of that fourteen thousand is a undocumented, uncontrolled, anybody can enter data into that website. And that's where this fourteen thousand is circulating throughout the United States. It's a false number. It's an unsubstantiated, unscientific, false number. And, and right now we've got this anti-vaccine, pro-vaccine. Instead of going to the stick.
I will, I'm only halfway through my comments. So, um, I am not in favor of spending one penny towards a vaccine, uh, education and programming, uh, fund. I think that our citizens need to be fully educated and they're not getting that right now. The other area that I'm most interested in is that the difference of uh, purifying the water with chlorine versus chlorine dioxide is huge in terms of the value of the health to the citizens at the end user. I don't know. I know other counties have made that transition. Uh, and I would certainly be willing to put funds towards exploring what that looks like to the city so that the delivery of the water services, uh, at a higher level.
And I would just add, uh, council member Neil, that we could probably argue over the numbers till the dying day. I'm not interested in providing information to our citizens or especially our employees. I think there's plenty of information out there and I trust them and support them in their own personal decisions based on the information they have available. Whether it's fourteen, whether it's fourteen hundred, whether it's forty-one thousand, I don't care. I support them to do what's right for them. Their families, their extended significant others. And ultimately, I'm not encouraged to spend taxpayer money on vaccine incentives and force or encourage our employees to take a vaccine if there's an incentive. They need to choose for themselves. There is plenty of information out there to allow them to decide for themselves. And I don't want firstly, my tax money or anyone else's of our citizens to be leveraged into them making that decision. I support their decision, whatever they decide. It is completely free. It is totally accessible. And there is no reason for me or anyone else's tax dollars to go towards them being incentivized to take a vaccine, period.
I'm going to ask for some clarification on the vaccine incentive. It was the possibility of it becoming a mandate for municipal employees, right? That's why you're interested in it.
That's part of it. We were contemplating this even before that. Um, the, the genesis of this, I mean, um, obviously there is disagreement over efficacy of it and the risk associated with it. I, I, I can see that. But we, we had, um, one of our work units where we had a scare and someone came down with COVID or I think we thought they came down with COVID. Um, and they were in close contact with everybody else on that team. And being that we are one deep in so many of our different job classes and duties. If we have one team that goes down, you know, we're, we're in big trouble. And so this is, this is not about, you know, trying to convince people. Well, this is what you should do because we're the government. We're telling you it's the healthy thing to do. This is more of an operational consideration. I'm going to be totally honest with that. And upfront, we wanted to, um, reduce the odds of having a whole team get taken down, um, by incentivizing it.
Stephanie, you've already gone. It's my turn and I'll come back to you. What types of incentives have you considered or do you have a plan of what those are already?
This, this and, um, time off to go get the vaccine and also vacation time, uh, is something we've seen in a number of different types of organizations. We've been hesitant to do the time off because we're already short staffed in a lot of places. And when I brought it up, my directors wanted to, um, get mad at me when I mentioned it and rightly so. Because we, we would give this, maybe it's on our vacation day, which folks love, uh, we've seen, uh, in research, but they wouldn't be able to use it for quite a while, um, because we, we are having some difficulty hiring folks. So it's, it's really been money, vacation or both, um, that other organizations around the country have found to be effective. This would be up to twelve thousand dollars. That would be everybody, everybody in our organization, um, from myself down to lifeguards to everybody. I am under no illusion that we would get everybody. But this would also include folks who have already gotten the vaccine. Again, as a way to help us have the best chance possible of preserving service levels.
Stephanie, you've had your chance. We're going to let every member have the opportunity to speak and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Protan Labar.
And, um, Michael, what is the incentive amount that you're offering if, if it goes to a dollar amount?
It's a hundred dollars.
Okay. Uh, the, the reason why I, I like the incentive is because right now you, you have a heavy-handed mandate that's looming over us. And leadership one oh one, it's the carrot of the stick. So we have this looming stick out there that if we have an opportunity to offer a carrot to bring people into getting a vaccine and that gets a few people over the threshold to getting it and takes it away from this political divide, which it is clearly a, a political divide. I, I'm in favor of an incentive if it helps to keep your staff whole. In terms of the education, Robert, I, I do agree with Stephanie. There, there's a ton of education. People either choose to accept what has historically been accepted globally by major, you know, the WHO, the CDC, the FDA on the, uh, the facts about the vaccines, the safety about it. There are other websites that are non, globally recognized, nationally recognized that people do turn to. It takes us out of people, you know, they've already made up their minds. And right now, if we can put a little bit of a carrot to get somebody to get a shot, they're not looking for new information, uh, but maybe a, a hundred bucks might get somebody to go get a shot. The, 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 the numbers as of this morning from the global health organizations, which my wife happens to get the data every morning. She's still licensed from these boards. It's one thousand nine hundred and twenty-six people per day are dying as of this morning. So the, the, we can argue over the fourteen thousand and, and the education. I, I just, I like a carrot approach to hopefully uh, avoid the stick approach because I, I've made it clear. I, right now, I, I believe the Biden mandate is constitutional until it's challenged. If it's challenged properly, then we'll find out if it's constitutional or not. So right now I just would like to get away from arguing constitutionality, not constitutionally. Proper, not proper, just gives, offer us a carrot and maybe we'll get some people.
I completely agree, Councilman Neil. I think there is more than enough availability, uh, free for all of our city employees to get vaccinated. This is money that could go towards our long-term goals of water and wastewater sustainability. We have a fiduciary responsibility to look out for our town in the long term. And if the availability of vaccines and getting vaccinated, if our employees choose to do so, is not a concern. They can do it. They can go to any clinic, any hospital, any doctor's office and get the vaccine. And it cost our city nothing to do that. I am more concerned with the responsibility that's been leveled on us on us as council members to seek out the long-term viability of our city. Which is why I'd like to see this twenty-seven thousand dollars in hazard pay and twelve thousand dollars of vaccine incentive, uh, allocated towards long-term water and wastewater information and availability so that we can continue on this city. That's the task that we've been given. There is no downward incentive for us to not encourage employees to get vaccinated. They can do it. If they choose to, it is no cost to the city. It is no expense to us whatsoever. We have a fiduciary responsibility to take this money we've been granted and move it to long-term future plans. Which is why I'd like to see those things eliminated from the budget and put under Kip's control as far as how he sees fit to spend the money.
Okay. First and foremost, this is money we have that if we don't use it, we lose it, correct?
Um, after twenty twenty-four, yes.
Correct. Okay. Um, so it's not our taxpayer dollars. It is.
It is.
Mayor, she is out of order. Could you please help?
I'm sorry. I want to make that clear.
Would you let me finish my sentence?
Yes.
It is not Woodland Park general fund tax money. It's federal. I know it's, I know it's everybody's tax dollars that pay to the federal government. But they are not general fund tax revenues. That's what I was trying to ask. Okay. So the hazard pay is a no-brainer to me. Kip's got to have, I don't know how many employees that didn't get a day off during COVID other than normal vacation day. Fire department or not fire department, police people, whoever. I have absolutely no problem with that. To be honest, I don't have a problem with anything you've allocated at this point. Vaccine incentive or not, I'm not going to go down that road. It's been discussed. Thank you.
Steph wanted to know if we could take a moment and have Amy Jacob explain to you what happens when someone here gets sick and people around them are unvaccinated, what it means to manpower and all. So Amy's going to just explain the process of what she goes through and what it means when someone gets sick here.
Thank you Suzanne and council.
Thank you Suzanne and counsel. So our process is right now, following guidance from CDC. If someone is sick, I do a, what we'll call a triage. If they are exhibiting COVID symptoms, they are quarantined for 10 days. So they are home. They can choose to get tested or not, not something we require, but they are home for 10 days. Then what I have to do is find out who they had close contact with. And let me tell you what close contact is. If you don't know the CDC definition, if you do, I apologize. It is within a 24-hour period, 15 minutes total, less than six feet. So a lot of us have close contact with people throughout a day. So anyone that they had close contact with is home for 14 days. They can choose on day five of their quarantine to get tested, but they're not required. It's a choice. But if they choose not to get tested, then they are out for 14 days. So we could have an entire crew if people are not vaccinated. The first person who's sick is out for 10. Those around them who had close contact would be out for 14 days. So we could have a crew down. And that's why we were looking at it from a continuity of operations standpoint. Now, if someone is vaccinated and they've had close contact with someone who has COVID or is exhibiting COVID symptoms, they don't have to quarantine. We're good. They can stay in the office doing their job. So I just wanted to explain our process of what we have to do in order to keep each and every one of our employees safe. So for me, that's number one. I want our employees safe and healthy. So that's what we do in our processes during this COVID pandemic.
Amy, can I ask you a question? So you talked about C, CDC guidelines. What are your guidelines from Teller County?
Teller County right now follows CDC, I believe, is what they're following.
Are you certain of that?
No, I'm not. I have not checked their website lately.
All right.
Council members, Zuluwaga, I have not.
I would request that you check that because I think that our marching orders as a home rule come firstly from our charter, secondly through our county. CDC's way up the line. So I think we're seeing a lot of pressure from federal government regulating our lives and I'm resisting that. So if you would check that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, I will.
I just have two requests, Mayor Pro-Tim. The first one is, is I would like to ask Ms. Alfieri to follow proper procedure and respect. We all have an opinion. We all have feelings and thoughts that are valid. And this is a deliberation. It's not an argument. And I would appreciate that respect. The second thing is this is not a political forum for people to stand up and share their beliefs and their feelings about what our federal government is doing. This is not political. This is our little town and we're trying to do what's best. I would appreciate refraining from political comments. Thank you.
I actually have a question about the fiber phase one. Michael and I have had this conversation. So this is for the council members that's sharing a conversations that Michael and I have had. I spent a career cautioning municipalities when I worked for EDSHP. That it is not a wise idea to take on board being an ISP, an internet service provider. So we, we need to proceed cautiously with how much involvement we get into what should lay in the the business world. I mean, businesses should be doing this, not a, a city government. What I would ask is a little clarity on what phase one means. Because I've asked, what are the requirements? We need, I mean, the first thing in engineering is define your requirements. You got to know what you're trying to solve. And right now, when I see spend $40,000 for phase one, I don't know what phase one is. So I'd like a little explanation if you have it, Michael. And then what are the requirements that we have? Because we do have quite a few broadband providers right now. We're a pretty well-saturated or well-serviced broadband city. So I'd like to know how bad it is that we would be taking that on versus just leasing out the fiber that we have. Because we could turn that into a business operation that requires no special skills other than accounting. When you start getting into buying the boxes and managing the boxes between the dark fiber ends, the security and liability go, the security worries are significant and the liabilities are substantial. And I think council needs to understand what phase one is all about. And Michael, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just, if you could talk us through it.
No, that's a great question. And I apologize. Excuse me, I don't have that information for you here in detail. This $40,000 number is one of a few different proposals from companies that do this sort of thing. This, this particular number is from a vendor business model agnostic company. They don't have a, a particular model in mind. I don't know if, if Rob knows, put Rob on the spot. Rob's been actually heading this, this project up.
Could you explain what the phase one for H R B?
So it's basically like, like you kind of said earlier, it's a just kind of an engineering overview of where the fiber should be to get things connected. And then they, I mean, they go into talking to different stakeholders, potential ISPs, like all these different things. Just making sure, like, how do we build that backbone that's going to support the city buildings? Branched off of support the community that, you know, in the areas that don't already have access to.
Councilmember Zuluwaga is correct. Yeah, it's just, it's a study. We can get you more details. We can provide that to the entirety of council on what that might look like. And again, there's a few different vendors and they all tackle it a little bit differently. At this point, this particular number, it's actually just under 40,000, seemed to make the most sense because it is completely vendor and model agnostic until the study is completed.
I think we have. And there's one other, just, there's one other part of this, and I don't know if you have any insight into it. But there's also a goal to put satellite internet connection, I think, within a year. Wasn't that Elon Musk or something trying to do it? So you've got land fiber competing with satellite connection. So is that going to be included in this study?
No, that would, that would not be part of this study. I'm not sure. I think you're talking about Starlink. Yeah, it feels weird to say, but it's true. I'm not sure what the timeline and the viability, the cost of, of that service is going to be. You could always make the argument for having continued buried fiber, if you will, in terms of reliability, redundancy. Some folks in the city, we've talked to, already have a pretty high-speed fiber connection, but they're interested in a redundant fiber connection, just kind of as a failsafe. So that's not contemplated in the $40,000. That's just, well, way, way out there right now.
Well, could it be, could that, could the, like, the evaluation of what that looks like with the satellite and the, the both, be it redundant or whatever, but if you're going to do a study, might as well look at what, what's going to impact our area on, on both levels.
Absolutely. We can, if we do proceed with this, and even if we don't, we can provide an overview of what that program looks like, Starlink looks like, and how it's developing too.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Have, have we reached out to, to P and TDS? I think those are the two broadband providers that provide this.
We've reached out to, to all of the incumbent providers, including some that are not actually in Woodland Park at the moment, but have an interest in it, but all the ones that are already here, we have.
Let me finish this, this sentence about cost-sharing the study. Since they're going to be the beneficiaries of something that they should, I'm a capitalist, they should be doing on their own to find out where they want to put their fiber eventually for servicing their customers. I, it's just when I see us taking this on by ourselves, it, it leaves the impression that we really are leaning towards becoming an internet service or a networking organization, which we do not have the funds to hire the skilled technicians to secure it.
So, and, and my response to that would be some of those providers are interested in actually bidding on a contract to be, to lay that fiber. And so asking them to cost-share it. Actually, let me back up. So part of the reason we, we like this $40,000 number is because it is agnostic. But what it would do, being that we have zero interest in being ISP, is it would put forward a plan for the incumbent ISPs to bid on. And they would then, it would be who could lay out whatever city thinks is most useful for the best price or the best quality service. And then those, those ISPs presumably would front a lot of their own cash. We actually have, one of the proposals from here is for one of the vendors to put out all the money to lay out the network at first.
Okay, now, now you're talking words that resonate to me that we would use this as a mechanism for others to bid against for providing the networking and internet service, internet services. I, I just do not want to see our budget have to absorb being an ISP or a network provider. But if this allows us, and I'm just sharing this knowledge, then now you're saying things that I think we would be taking care of the citizens in spending the money in that regard.
So, and I, I'm happy to answer more questions, but just on a time check, we're at 5:06. And I, I think the more time-intensive piece is the one ahead. So what, what?
I just want to remind.
Oh, okay.
I just want to remind that in last year's budget, I believe it was, we, there was, we have a termination of fiber that we participated in bringing up the pass that we own 24 line strings. Or strands. And I think, and, and I, I just want to be sure we're all talking about the extension of that and bringing it into the center of town. And particularly, we were interested in, in providing a network for our facilities and then possibly using some of them for outside use and maybe some leasing, et cetera. And I just wanted to be sure that that's what we're all talking about.
It, it is, Kelly. Yeah, and just general knowledge, there's 24 strands. You, you use two, but you use in pairs. So there's 12, 12 pairs. The requirements that I've seen discussed for the city, we would not need two pair, let alone 12. So that really leaves about 10 pair that we could get into a leasing model. The bandwidth is so great. It's how you cap it and the equipment you put on it. The fiber is enormous capabilities.
Yeah, and I just see that as a huge investment because COVID, if nothing else, proved that how dependent we are upon very fast speed. And I'll tell you, the more people that come in here buying homes and, and investing in business here, that is their first question. So I just wanted to clarify that, and that's all. Thank you.
And Michael, the, for me, the contrast would be, what is the city paying right now to peak internet? Or whoever are providers, what are we, what are we paying out as a rental? And in this study, how could that turn around? What's that annual budget figure look like for us? And then how could we turn that around to an art, to our advantage, not necessarily becoming a, 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 a business at it, but offsetting, certainly offsetting our own costs.
Sure. And that, that's a major consideration of it. We're, we're making some moves right now to bring that cost down. But this would be kind of the next longer-term step that we could choose any ISP we want, including ones that are not here in town to serve just the city. And we could kind of name our own price, really, if you will, with, within a reason by having our own network. What, 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 what I will say, and, and maybe we can move on. We, we don't have to, of course. But what I would envision after doing this initial phase of a study is to come back and let the, let the council know what the options are in terms of engineering, what that, those cost scenarios might look like, who the stakeholder, stakeholders are, what kind of revenue there might be for the city. And then we would bring it back to council and let council dictate a vision for what it would like to see for a municipal fiber network. And so this, this is kind of to get us, get us that first step. Because this is the first time we would have a, a professional third party who actually knows what they're doing, because God knows I don't on this particular topic. This would be our first step forward, and then we would have something cogent, coherent to bring back to you all. And you all could then decide, hey, this looks like the city's not going to be an ISP. This looks like the city could stand to use some money. This looks like we could provide a previously unobtainable quality of service to a lot of our residents and businesses. We do want to move forward, or you know what, we really don't need it. We'll, we'll take a pass on it. So we, we would definitely come back very soon after the completion of that and come to you for, to articulate that vision for us, if that helps.
And just briefly, Amy had the answer that Councilmember Zuluwaga was looking for, so I just wanted her to be able to express it briefly.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim. So council members of the law, I looked at Teller County's website and Teller County Public Health. They are following CDC guidelines.
Okay, Michael, if you'd like to move on to the next topic or council, if you have a topic you'd like to move on to.
So what, what I'm hoping to come away with is, again, as a consensus on these 2021 items. If council is willing to do that, so we can move forward on those items.
I have a question real quick about the, the hazard pay as to how you had that in mind for allocation.
So, and Suzanne and Amy worked on it, and I'll, I'll have to give them credit. Do you want to go through it, Amy?
When looking at the hazard pay, we did a tier system, tier one, two, and three. Tier one were our employees who had, in their job description, they were on the front lines. They were the most, it could have the most exposure to COVID. These would be our police officers. This would be our wastewater operators. This would be field services. The timeline that we looked at for the hazard pay was for employees who were employed March to end of May. Is that really height of COVID that we had? Where we had people furloughed, we had employees furloughed, we had some people working from home. Those who were furloughed or working from home are not eligible for any of the hazard pay. So tier one were those frontline workers who could have been exposed to COVID probably the most is what I would say. Tier two are those employees who still didn't have an opportunity to work from home, still had potential exposure to COVID. Those were our public works employees who could meet people in the parks or on the streets. So it was our public works employees. It was some of our city hall employees. Our Christie Huber had to work. She still had to be here and answer phones and take care of our citizens. Tier three were those who, we had a few employees who worked on the election. Those types of employees, those employees who still couldn't work from home had less exposure to COVID, still had to show up to work, were not able to work from home. Do you want me to go over the dollar amounts? And all directors also were excluded from hazard pay. Because it's their job to be here. Sorry, guys.
And just to clarify, those workers, this was according to their job descriptions, and they basically did not have a choice as to whether or not to accomplish the tasks or not.
Correct. They did not have a choice. They had to be at work. Thank you.
Michael, I, I do have one last question. Could you say what the parks and Could you say what the parks and recs budget line was again, please?
It was for the ARP, use of the ARP was a hundred sixty seven thousand dollars.
The use of the ARP.
Oh, the this money that we're talking about, is that the federal money?
Yeah.
Yeah, the rest of your plan dollars, hundred sixty seven thousand for parks maintenance.
So that was, to be more specific on that, upgrades to park facilities, because this money was eligible for that. That was anything from trying to put in what citizens would like, upgrading the concrete that's all busted around the park.
Bathroom.
Yeah, general maintenance, a lot of vandalism occurred, trying to get that cleaned up as best as possible. It all the way to parking wreck to where we're replacing nets on soccer goals, goals themselves, because of various activities that they would do with the goals. Bags around the baseball diamonds. You name it, happens out there. So it was just to beautify those parks. All of them.
On the on the bathrooms, does that include the the touchless stuff and the locks that we that are electronic or need to be done by key or whatever that are changing those out to electronic like down it?
So we have time box.
Time box.
Some bathrooms, not all. The most facilities were upgraded to touchless already. That was paid for for different COVID funds. But this was more beautification. And so on and so forth of city facilities.
And on on a staff level, I know last summer we had issues with the dealing with the trash at the parks on a timely basis. So are we looking from a health and safety standard to have funds allocated towards that?
In regards to more frequently removal of
Particularly, well, particularly in tourist areas and on high traffic times.
So we do a very good job of removing the trash. It's when people use our trash facilities as their own personal trash.
Oh.
We can't control when they do that. So typically, it happens on the weekends when we don't have someone there every couple hours.
Right.
So, but we could, we could purchase more trash cans. It's just more trash and then our trash.
People putting in trash before dusk or after dawn.
Yeah.
Thirty minutes before.
It's not the vampires.
And just to make a comment to our bathrooms or restrooms, we're hit pretty hard during all this. So it's a full time job just to keep up with those.
So I just had a question about the seeing the HVAC for the cultural center, but what about HVAC for this building?
Yes, Suzanne.
Do you want me to answer that?
Of course.
Yes. When we were prioritizing, we felt that if we had to pick one, the cultural center needed it more than we did here, because they have two hundred people at an event at a time where you know the amount of us that are here.
Can it be used for both buildings?
It could, yes.
Okay.
But we could also decide on that next year.
That's true. Yeah, any any of these, you got some time on these things, too. So if you wanted to delay it, we could bring it back at any time, really, and it would just be another supplemental conversation for the budget. Any money we do spend on this, we do need to appropriate via supplemental, so it takes y'all to vote.
Okay, council, do you have more questions about the topics on this list? I just would like to comment that at this point, and this is not to not be a good partner. At this point, I'm just not real nuts about the proposal for the fires, the Knox boxes. And it's not that I don't like it in overall. I just, I don't know. I'm just, I'm having struggling with it, and it may be more the type than it is. I don't know. Chief, do you have anything to say about that? Thoughts from your perspective?
From my perspective, and I spoke to Michael, and I was in on the meeting with the fire chief. It seems a real simple a real simple thing to have. And 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 a good thing to have until you look at the value and the cost. And I was kind of really amazed at this dollar amount to do this. And when you talk about efficiency versus value, that's where I'm faltering with this.
Me, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And and if it's something you would like to contemplate, marinate on a little bit, we could also give you more information inconceivable, even ask the the fire chief if you wanted to come in and share more about it.
There would be one piece of information I would like. How many medical facilities or assisted living facilities would need these lock spot, the lock boxes, where you have a large concentration of people that might, you know, pass away or need medical help, hospitals, clinics, assisted living.
They're twenty four seven now. They're staffed twenty four seven. I don't think they ever lock the doors.
Well, that's why I wanted to know.
Long term care.
The the needs medically, if they're a hundred percent staff, then it we're really talking about a hundred citizens homes.
Maybe home health or something like that.
We can ask the question.
Anyway.
Yeah, so with with that said, again, just because we are running short on time already, the the four priority twenty twenty one recommendations is the hazard pay at sixty seven, vaccine incentive up to twelve, the Knox boxes that forty two thousand five hundred, and then fiber phase one study. The other items for twenty twenty two, the parks maintenance, HVAC filtration for U-Pass and water, the Dove system. We can bring those back. I mean, you can, if you like them, you can approve them now by consensus. And we bake them into probably the twenty twenty two budget process. But the more urgent ones are the twenty twenty one that I mentioned to you.
So, yeah, I'm I'm kind of with Kelly and and the chief. I'm fine with everything, but I I either need more information or or some better explanation as to why we should do the the lockbox thing.
And as far as the vex vaccine incentives, I'd like to see it spent on vaccine education, because there's a whole nother side of this that we haven't experienced, but I have personal experience of friends who have had the vaccine and who have died within three days. I have other experience of people who have had the vaccine and are now in a hospital. So if you're looking to put funds towards incentivizing people without educating them, I think that's irresponsible. So I would like to see that allocation, given these are federal dollars, be designed in such a way that those dollars could be spent if you do have a staff member who has had the vaccine and then it's up with the variant and ends up in hospital. That's a far more statistical reality than it is having more people getting the vaccine.
Robert, do you mean like a, like if they provided a handout for the staff, for the employees, like with, you know, the backs guided by CDC or something like that, so that, you know, if people decide that they're interested in the incentive, they can also have that handout at the same time?
I'm not saying we should incentivize people to get the vaccine by any stretch of imagination, but if we want to use these federal dollars
Yeah.
for something that has to do with the vaccine, then there are other consequences that are likely to show up within this next billing cycle. And I don't think that's going to be a hundred dollars to get the vaccine.
I understand. Absolutely. But I was just wondering if you like, like, if you thought to give them an idea of like what a handout with the CDC information of, you know, your your risks versus, I hate this word, but risks versus rewards of vaccination. I don't know a better word to use, but, you know, something like that. And then it's available like in Amy's office, you know, for the employees to take.
And we could provide, I mean, the full list of medical resources available for just like when you watch the commercial, and they give you all the side effects at the end.
Yeah, that.
We could provide the full slate of materials. I I'd be really hesitant to go too far into the weeds aside from what's provided by the FDA, CDC.
Well, see, that's where I do. That's where I totally object, because I don't think you're getting all the right fully disclosed info there. I think you need to look at some of the medical doctors who have come out and said, this needs to stop, and their statistics, which coming from unbiased, impartial, impartial, I'm sorry, sources. So anyway, I I am totally object to giving a vaccine incentive. I'm okay to give a vaccine education. And I think that if you're looking at allocating funds, you may find that you need to allocate funds for somebody who has got the vaccine already and ends up in hospital. So that's what I'm.
It's still a choice.
Yeah, it is.
It is fully on a choice, whether they're incentivized or not. And when you do, I'm vaccinated. And when you get the vaccine, they provide you with pages of disclosure and information. And and I don't think that this city should provide anything that isn't that isn't Teller County Public Health or CDC information, because we are not qualified to make those determinations or to provide that kind of information to anyone other than ourselves as individuals. So there is plenty of education and information provided right up until the moment you sit down. So I I'm I I personally believe that the vaccine is completely a personal choice. I think wearing a mask, and I'm not going to get political, not going to go there. But I think it's a personal choice, and even if there is an incentive, it's still a choice. It's not a mandate. Thank you.
I agree with most most of what you're saying. Absolutely. I don't want it on my conscience to incentivize somebody to get a vaccine as a council member. I totally will not support incentivizing somebody to get the vaccine because of what I know as a council member. So.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's go ahead and start with each member. We're going to go down the list quickly, and I'd like each of you to say what you are, what you support and don't support.
But we, this is, we can't vote in this, can we?
It's a consensus.
We're going to bring it to you for a vote.
The supplemental on October seventh.
October seventh.
And I'm going to start just because Stephanie can't see us, I'm going to start with Robert, Rusty, Catherine, Kelly, and then Stephanie. So, okay, so Robert, what hazard pay, yea or nay?
I'm fine with them.
Okay, vaccine incentive.
No.
Knox boxes.
Need more information.
Okay, fiber phase one.
I'm good with that.
Okay. We're just doing twenty twenty one right now.
Yeah.
Rusty, hazard pay.
Yes.
Vaccine incentive, Knox boxes, fiber phase one.
Yes.
You guys are voting. I can say I give consensus or not.
Yes, you support it. Yeah. Yeah, no, it's fine. We're doing it as quick and dirty as we can. Catherine, hazard pay.
Yes.
Vaccine incentive.
Yes.
Knox boxes.
Uh, maybe.
Fiber phase one.
Yes.
Okay, Kelly, hazard pay. Okay. Stephanie, hazard pay.
No.
Vaccine incentive.
No.
Knox boxes.
No.
Fiber phase one.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'd like it noted that I don't consider this an official vote. A a
Right.
Be a vote is not a consensus. It's not an official vote, and I think council needs more discussion and more conversation on this in the public endeavor. And therefore, I don't, I don't consider this to be any official decision of council whatsoever.
Right, we get that. We're just looking for consensus to bring it back as a supplemental to then discuss in the budget further.
And I give no consensus.
Okay. All right. So I support, I'm I support all of them. I'm also iffy on the Knox boxes. I I'm curious if there's any better technology out there, and there may not be. And I do think it would be useful for the fire chief probably to come present to us so that we understand better the decision we're making.
We, yeah, we can, we can request that you do that.
Okay, so staff, do you all feel like you have a general understanding of the consensus of council? Okay, is there anything else any of you would like to add? Or let us know? Okay.
Thank you, council. So we will go with super flying speed through the other one, although we may need to bring it back. Okay, can we queue up the next one there, Rob? And so Aaron is going to walk us through the first handful of slides quickly. And then I'll I'll take us home, hopefully. The good news is, we have good news for you. So take it away, Aaron. All right, I guess. Go ahead.
You want to take this first one? I'm going to go.
Yeah, you're right. I'll take this one. So Aaron, in his great wisdom, asked me, hey, Michael, what's your objective for the budget? What do you want to get out of it? And I'm like, I've never really thought about that. But I have put it to words for you here. The kind of the theme, we call objective, but kind of the theme is we're looking to restore or maintain the high quality of service our residents have come to expect in an environment with rapidly increasing costs of doing business. And so what what I'm hearing from you all in terms of your priorities and what you'll see in terms of staff's priorities and needs is there's not a lot of new. There's, I mean, aside from the fiber, I don't really think any any of this is new, and the fiber is grant funded. But we are falling behind with rapid increases in inflation. That's killing us on the employee retention side, the employee hiring side. And just the cost of all the stuff that we need to do, our job just keeps going up and up. So you'll see a lot of what you're going to find here in our, the staff side at least, and even in your priorities, just trying, kind of trying to tread water in some in some cases improve. But we, I I think we may have eroded, unfortunately, some of our service levels in a few areas just because we have been short on staffing. I think even our amazing directors here would have to admit that in some places we've had some lapses, just because we haven't had the bodies. And so a lot of what you'll see is, let's get back to where we were. Let's get our city back to being the beautiful place we we all have come to know and love that may have lapsed a little bit. So what that means is restoring, maintaining quality of service and the face of inflation. As I said earlier, we are a service organization. Employees provide services. So we need to figure out how to take care of the employees we have, because it's a lot more expensive to hire and train new ones. And make sure then the future, we're competitive in hiring and retaining good quality folks, not just warm bodies. And then while we have some of this one time money, like we just talked about, Councilmember Alfia was wise and pointing to like, hey, water infrastructure is really important. And so are roads and parks as well. Plan for the future and investing in these key capital assets that we've been talking about, especially roads. I heard from a number of you that, hey, fix the freaking roads. And so you'll see, pull the weeds, fix the roads. Off the floor, Cinderella, no floors. But that's, that's the kind of things that you're going to see in here, me and potatoes, if you want to call it that. But just kind of the basic stuff, getting back to where we were, and maybe a little bit of improvement. So with that, sorry, that's a lot of words, Aaron. So many words. Moving forward.
All right, so we're going to jump into some revenue projections for the rest of twenty one and two thousand twenty two. And then we're going to get into the council priorities and the staff priorities. All right, let me move this out of my way here. All right, so we are seeing a significant increase in our revenues through twenty one so far through July. We're seeing about a almost fourteen percent increase year to date in our two percent sales tax, our lodging tax, and our one percent roads tax, the one point oh nine percent school district. You can see year to date versus the budget. We're looking at about an eight hundred and eighty one thousand dollar increase in general funds for two thousand twenty one. Roads tax is going to see about four hundred thousand dollar increase. The school district is going to see about three hundred ninety three thousand and highway user tax as well, because And highway user tax as well because we've had so much increased traffic in Woodland Park. They have significantly increased our rates. So we're gonna see about $84,000 approximately from that fund.
Can you walk us through how to read that chart? Please give us each column slowly.
Absolutely. So the, the column on the far left is all the different revenues, the major revenues that the city receives. So we have the 2% sales tax, we have our lodging tax, our property tax, and our vehicle use tax. Those, those are the four largest ones that we bring in. The 1% roads tax is part of our, our 3% total sales tax. We have the 2% in our revenues and then the 1% down on this next line here. Then we have our 1.09% school district tax, and we have the highway user tax. So the next column over, we have the 2021 budget. So these are the numbers that we actually have in our budget document for 2021. The next column over is our projections for 2021. So currently, we are 13.7% up year to date on our 2% sales tax. Our 1% roads tax and our 1.09% school district tax. Our lodging tax is up. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's significant. It's like 150%. Property taxes are flat because those don't change in mid-year. And so we're up 13.7% year to date. And then we projected 10% for the remaining months with a conservative projection on what these numbers will look like at the end of the year. So based on that, if you go over to the first column in green, we're projecting that we're gonna end the year 881.
What is the, you skipped a column. What is the 2022 projected number? What does that represent? What you're projecting based on mathematically aligned from 20 to 21, what it should be in 2022?
Correct. So based on our 2021 projection, we're projecting a five and a half percent increase in 2022. And that number, we came in consensus with our CPA firm that we're using as a conservative range. The range that we projected was five and a half to 7%. So we used the, the most conservative number of five and a half percent to project for 2022.
Okay, now your first column in green, what is that?
Absolutely. So this is the projected revenue increase that we're expecting for 2021 at the end of the year. Yeah, so we're expecting our 2% sales tax to increase by 800,000 over our budgeted number. We're expecting lodging tax to be up 80,779 over our budget.
Yeah, you don't have to go down to the horizontal rows. What is the 2022 increase? So that's projected increase over a projected budget number.
Correct. We're looking at 2022 versus our 2021 projection. And then our far column is the increase over our 2021 budget. So if you look at the far column in the darker green, this is 2022 versus our 2021 budget.
Okay, thank you for explaining it.
Absolutely.
Alright. Move forward.
And this is just a graphical representation of what we just discussed, showing how every single revenue type that we have is increasing. And exactly what we just discussed. So our general fund revenue increase 2022 projection versus our 2021 budget is 1,344,000 increase. And with that, oh, and then we have some inflation numbers, the CPI index for August. Oh, I'm sorry, that should be 21. I apologize. It's 5.35% before the seasonal adjustment. The wholesale inflation rate was raised 8.3% August 22, August 2020 to August 2021. And the IRS just put out that they're expecting to increase the tax bracket rates by 3% for 2022. So we are seeing inflation on the rise. We have been for quite some time. And with that, I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, Erin. And I, we're starting to, because I'm starting to pay attention now, starting to see some other sources of just how crazy inflation is. Read one analyst, well, analysis. I think it was someone like ARP or someone like that, looking at social security for 2022. Anticipating a 6 point, a 6.0 or 6.1% COLA increase for social security in 2022. That's on top of a 1.3% increase for 2021 for social security.
Sorry, I missed the number. We, so.
No, that's fine. So an analyst who looks at social, social security COLAs, cost of living adjustments anticipates a six or 6.1% COLA increase in 2022 for social security. The biggest increase since the early 1980s. And some, somebody on staff who's familiar with such things said the, the VA benefit will go up by six, five? But was it five and a half or six? Not to put him on the spot or anything, between five and a half and 6% for VA benefits. And then as Erin just showed you, you're, you're looking at 5.3% CPI increase year over year through August. So you get the idea that it's, it's, it's moving. And so in that context, our, my biggest priority for our staff, and I, they probably would say so too. Is that we, we need to catch up with that. You know, we, we already play catch up a lot of times to larger jurisdictions. We're never gonna be able to have parity with the Colorado Springses and Denver's, Roars of the world, the counties. We're just not gonna do it. But our, our folks are by standing still, which they are in 2021 year to date. They're falling further behind. That's what those stats are meant to tell you. So having a, a COLA increase, I, I will come talk to you probably next time we meet about the mid-year COLA that I've hinted at you about several times for 2021, as well as having one for 2022.
Michael, are we gonna survey for the budget? Amy, are we gonna survey this year for the budget? Excellent.
Right, and we, and something else to go with that is I will be bringing to you a, a pool of dollars to allow us to make mid-year market adjustments. If we find that as we do market studies throughout the year, if we're falling behind substantially, we can make that move mid-year for certain groups of folks. Fix the stupid roads, Michael. That's what I've heard several times. That includes sidewalks and ped ramps. Pull the weeds. I'm getting, I'm getting, I'm getting there. I'm getting there. I promise, I promise. It was on there. Was on here. It's on one of these slides. Oh, yeah, it's, it's the very next one. Parks in downtown beautification and maintenance. Pull the weeds. In, in short, we have not replaced vehicles, as I understand, since 2016. I've done that in my previous city and it's a ticking time bomb. I just mentioned that market pool of dollars to do mid-year adjustments for folks who fall behind the market too far. We talked about fiber phase one. This might be future phases of fiber. We would anticipate that coming out of grant dollars, not general fund dollars. Seriously, I hope to not spend a single dollar of city money on, on fiber facilitation projects, only other people's money. Don't hold me to that, but that's, that's the intent. It really, truly is. Just inflation in general. I would like to see some money in there for the first phase of the reliever route. CDOT is sitting on substantial funds to get that first corridor study, as I understand it being called, done in 2023. And so I like us to consider paying, contributing a little bit to what the city's grant match would be. I've talked to some of you about that already. And then one council member had mentioned to us, and we really like it because we got to work here. Some facade improvements to our building here at City Hall. So that's the staff side. I, you all, all six of you are kind enough to talk with me. At some length, if we go to the next slide. These are the staff priorities. They align somewhat with council priorities. I think the big, big things align perfectly with y'all's priorities. And maybe I should have led off with this. My, my intent in having this conversation with you tonight is once again to have some kind of consensus on your priorities for council. Because these are, some of these things are not necessarily in concert with staff's priorities, but you know, it's ultimately y'all's budget. And so we like the direction from you kind of at the high level. We're not getting into specific dollar amounts tonight, but we are going to walk you through y'all's priorities. And see if that's a consensus for the whole council. That makes sense. So if we could kick it to the, the next slide. So the parenthetical number there is the number of council members who I heard mention these things. So staff compensation, thank you very much. From five of you, fix the roads, not pull the weeds, fix the roads, three of you. Um, three of you mentioned contributing further to that debt service reserve for the WAC, Windland Aquatic Center. As of the end of 2021, I think we'll have $600,000 in that debt service reserve. Would we want to do more? Two of you said reduce the mill levy. Again, the property mill levy, the number given to me was 14, changed it from 15, 7, 5 to 14.5. One of you mentioned facade improvements. Another one of you mentioned revolving grants for partnering agencies. What this is, is, and I, I don't have a real fine point on this, and if council member mentioned it wants to elaborate on it, we can. But as we, as we've reduced funding for some of our partnering agencies, primarily Main Street, what would it look like if we wanted to make more funding available for a Main Street or other organizations in 2022? Would we want to see those organizations come up with a match? Like, hey, you want $10,000 in funding from the city? You gotta come up with 5,000 or 10,000. Or just, do you want to have a pot of money that folks like Main Street or others could apply for? And it would be vetted, and then it would be given to them in the form of a very legitimate grant. And so, and you'll have to forgive me, I can't remember the detail. It was council member case, said there's store funding for tools and staffing for public works. I apologize. I don't know if you want to elaborate. I didn't take very good notes on that one.
Oh, that's okay. I just know in conversations with department heads and, you know, line workers that there's been a significant erosion over my time on council, at least. There's been a significant erosion to staff having the tools they need to do their jobs. And the staffing to accomplish what needs to be done. And so I'd just like us to get back to listening to our department heads. They're the experts. They know how to fund operations and make the operations run efficiently. Because all we do is set ourselves up for failure and we get further and further behind the eight ball. And I think we're starting to see that in those silly weeds. So I would just like to see, I mean, we can look back to prior budgets where operations were funded adequately, not excessively. Our citizens have come to expect a level of service, and we have not been delivering that for quite some time. And I'd like to see that restored. And part of that's in compensation. It's not all just tools. It's, it's a, it's over the, all of the things associated in each of those departments, their cost. So that's really where I was coming from.
I actually drove by and looked at the facade after it was brought up. So you can up that to two council members.
Remind me to tell you a story.
Three councilmen, okay.
Well, we don't have much time, so we'll take a rain check.
No, offline, offline.
It's a lovely color green, except when it falls off. And then finally, security enhancements for council chambers was one I heard in terms of just making the place safer for if active shooter sorts of situations. And so what?
And, yeah.
That's you.
And, and my.
Be ready.
And my comment to the city manager is I would far support concealed carry for those staff who have concealed carry to be allowed to do so. To have a ready safety on, I think this is a people's building, and I don't think we should be overly paranoid about serving the people and worried about who's gonna come after it. But I, I do think it's prudent to allow concealed carry amongst our staff or those who are qualified. And just FYI, the building does not have any restrictions on bringing weapons in. Right, right. Yeah. I agree with you. Well, that's policy change that I would suggest, yeah.
So again, what, what I'm hoping to get in these last 10 precious minutes, whether it happens or not, is, is direction on whether council would like to see these incorporated into the budget. And normally we would try and get all of this in here, but again, it's not. There, I'll, I'll be honest, the, the reduction of the mill levy is, is at odds with a lot of the other stuff. And so that's something that would have, because it is fairly significant, that's something that would have to be programmed into the budget at this time. Right now, not assigning numbers to these things. But when we come back to you all and we give you the, the city manager's proposed budget in mid, late October, you will see this fleshed out with, with actual numbers on it. And then council will have the chance to go back as you, as you've always done and say, you know, where is this? Can you add this? Can you take that out? I'd like to see this and that and the other. So this is just to kind of get us down that road. Staff has already been working through an initial list of what it believes it means. Again, I think there's a lot of alignment here, and we can do a lot of these things. With the number that Erin mentioned, I think we can do virtually all of these things. Again, however, that, that mill levy reduction, if that's something the majority of council wants to see, well, we'd like to know that now ahead of time before going in later and trying to balance that out. So with that, I, I would hope for some consensus totally sunset with this 550.
You guys wanna go through the list or you wanna, well? Let me, let me start. Robert, I'll start again with you and say, how do you feel about the council and staff priorities? Would you like to see those? Put into the budget for discussion?
I'm not opposed. I'm not opposed to putting them in for discussion, and I think that Michael laid out pretty well. It's like not assigning numbers to anything. It's just discussion points on this. So I think that still gives us a right to say yea or no, nay once again. So as far as a working model, I have opposition to some of these, but I don't think it's enough for me to, you know, take up more than 30 seconds right now. So.
Sure. Rusty, how do you feel about them?
Given the guidance to move forward with putting some numbers behind it, that's fine. You know, the, you can see what the support is for each one by the parentheses to number, and that should tell you something.
Sure.
Except for the facade improvements.
Catherine?
Yeah, I don't really have a problem with the parties. I don't really think the mill levy makes sense at this point, but that's, we, you know, that's my only objection. It's not an objection. We can discuss it, but I just don't see it. Sure.
Kelly? How much time do I have? Absolutely, absolutely. Cannot support reduction of a mill levy in the same breath with everything else that's on these priorities. It's irresponsible. And until, as I've said many times, and until the DDA is dissolved and their life is over and the monies go back to the taxing jurisdictions, and we all sit down at a table and have a conversation about what a mill levy reduction looks like as a group of all of the authorities, meaning fire, library, county, everyone, and make it meaningful. I will never support a mill, mill levy reduction. We have a lot, I mean, to, to try and pay off debt early and reduce our revenue makes no sense. So I support everything but the mill levy reduction at this point. Stephanie?
So I only support a number of things. I would clarify. So I only support a number of things. I would clarify that reducing the mill levy. In regards to the DDA doesn't do anything. Keep in mind, if we dissolve the DDA, we lose the tax revenue that was pledged to pay their debt. And the city has to take on about three to four million dollars of debt.
Excuse me, I did not say dissolve the DDA. I said when their life was over, just a correction.
And again, if we do, we have to dissolve about three to four million dollars worth of debt of the DDA. That there is no longer tax revenue pledged to play, to pay that debt. Um, the fact is we have recordy, record sales tax revenue, record property tax revenue. Record lodging tax revenue. And the city wants to continue to consume more money. From the citizens of Woodland Park for expansive extent, uh, expense, uh, expenses. Of revenue and not give them a tax reduction. It's ridiculous. We are bringing in more money than we ever have before. And for the city to consume that money without giving a tax reduction to the citizens. Is ridiculous. It is government bureaucracy to its extent. I support reduction in mill levy and I think this city needs to actually look at it expenses. I mean, let me say the four letter verb, Burke. Why have we not addressed that study? That is $200,000 of savings. That this city has continued to turn a blind eye on. And yet we don't want to do it because we say, hey, more tax revenue, we're happy to take it. We're going to waste it. We're going to spend it and we're going to claim to the taxpayers. We don't have enough money to pay to pave their roads. No thanks. I'm not interested. That's not why I got on here. That's not what I'm fighting for and I will not. And continue to stand in the way of this council continuing. To spend citizen taxpayer money recklessly and ridiculously. Without cutting their own expenses when our taxpayers are suffering to pay. To put food on the table and pay their property taxes. Nope, not my goal. That's my, that's my point. That's what I have to say. Thank you, Mayor Protem LaBar.
Okay, Rusty.
Yeah. And Michael, I, I forgot I had one thought. And I actually heard it, um, when you told me what Stephanie had said. And, and Stephanie, I'm sorry, I, I don't support the, uh, reduction of the mill levy. However, I did learn that you had made a suggestion. That, um, the, the reserves that we have, we're sitting at about 27%. Uh, uh, I think a topic that we should talk about is maybe capping that and say, we've got enough in the reserves. Let's take any money that we do have instead of keep beefing it up higher and higher. Let's go ahead and put that money to better use than just sitting collecting 2% or whatever it's collecting in the bank. I, I think we should look at capping the reserves. We've got it quite a bit.
And I apologize. I think two council members did mention that, but, um, I, I failed to put it on here. So you're right. Council member Neil, you're right.
Sorry. It is important to recognize that the investments that the city makes. In our savings are, they have to be by regulation, very, very safe and secured. And when we're looking at, if we're lucky, getting a 1% return on our savings in. Um, SIRS and whatever other investments we're involved with. That is not nearly as much as the return we could get on the money that we put into. And back in to the personal, uh, the, the personal environment, the personal economy. Um, to create more jobs, more revenue, more sales tax revenue. 1%, i- if it's that at all, is really good. Um, and for us to maintain that money in our reserve, I do agree. 20 to 25% is a reasonable, rational reserve for us to keep. It's responsible. It's what we should have. But anything in excess of that is us just taking money out of the personal sector. That can't be regenerated into more revenue, more sales tax, more. Uh, benefit to personal endeavors and our benefit as a whole. Anything above that is just simply irresponsible.
Thank you for your thoughts, Stephanie. We are out of time and I'm just going to say I also give consensus. To our list.
Thank you.
And accept the mill levy and I'll even, uh, support the facade improvements.
We're going to name a side of the building after each one of you. We get more than that, I don't know.
Don't bother.
You can have, don't bother. The parking lot.
And Stephanie, those of us that were here got a handout of the slides and I'm sure that Michael would be happy to email them to you so that you have them.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right. Thanks. Meeting's over.